All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to call to order the Eastlaw Meadow School Committee meeting. It's November 6, 2017, and it is 7:00 PM. This meeting is both, is being both audio and video recorded. I ask if anyone else is doing so to let us know. Okay, no one is. Moving on, if you can all please stand, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have roll call, starting on my left. Ally?
Allison Seaton, student rep.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich McSharon.
Gregory Thompson.
Geordre Mayeau.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Elizabeth Marcin-Boutros.
Valerie Aneer, assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction.
Kathy Salete, recording secretary.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have 2.1, the approval of the October 23, 2017 executive session meeting minutes.
Move to approve the October 23, 2017 executive session meeting minutes.
Okay, motion's made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
One abstention.
One abstention, so it carries forward, 4-0, one abstention, thank you. We have 2.2, the approval of the October 23, 2017 regular session meeting minutes.
I move to approve the October 23, 2017 regular session minutes.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
And one abstention.
And one abstention, so it carries forward, 4-0, one abstention, thank you. All right, we have committee and subcommittee communications. So Ally, starting with you, if you'd like to begin.
Recently at the high school, we had our college fair about a week ago, which went off very well. And on Friday, term one ended, so today was the first day of term two.
Excellent. All right, Bill?
Okay, as everybody knows, Beth, Gordon, and myself attended the conference this past weekend, uh, this past week. Very well, very good sessions. In one session in particular, the keynote session on Thursday was given by Bill Daggett, and it was on educating for the future, it can be done. It was quite an interesting presentation on what his thinking is, what education's gonna look like right around the corner. And to that point, I'm gonna work with Andy Churchill, executive director of the LPVDC, to bring him into this, into the member districts. We'll pick a school and have him give this presentation to, let's say, leadership team, school administrator, it's all school administrators, school committees, and I wanna see if we can get some town officials. Because it, it was that moving, it was that powerful. So I'm gonna continue to work on that, but otherwise, it was a great event, conference as usual.
Great, thank you. Rich, do you have anything?
Yeah, just three items. Collaborative committee meeting last week, where I think Purdue will be forwarding to the first template on the school calendar for next year.
Ready.
Secondly, attended football game Friday night, it was not the way I expected it would go, but while attended. And one thing I will say is it complements our high school. The Eastlaw Meadow band was there. And my understanding was the Longwood High School band did not show up. So we, so our band was well-represented. Huh?
I don't know if it's that they don't have one, do they have one?
Oh, they have one. Yeah, they just didn't show up. And so, compliments of this KNA high school administration that we did that. And also, being a member of the collaborative committee, I was able to experience some of the work that went into tomorrow, which is the professional development day. And it's really exciting that the 31 assistant superintendent staff members are presenting to our staff.
Yeah, we have 29 modules being presented, some of them with some co-presenters.
That's wonderful that our staff's presenting to this staff. So congratulations to Central Office.
Should be a great day.
Oh, good.
Lot of excitement in the room.
All right, Greg, moving on to you.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
I just wanted to just add that I did make it over to the high school for the college fair also. And I really think that a few years that I've been here, every year, I think you get more and more students coming in, in every grade, from freshmen, even the seniors walking around too, and just talking with some of the people there for the colleges. And I think it's growing each year. There's a lot more excitement in the schools with it, so continuing.
All right, Beth?
Just went to the conference, it was good. Lot on social, emotional learning, and, you know, it's, it's actually scary. And knowing that with the whole marijuana thing coming in, and how the school districts are gonna do that, we're gonna have to look at our policies based on, you know, some, some of the issues that are gonna be coming up with just the, the use of it becoming legal with the marijuana, how we're gonna deal with that with parents, and letting our children lead, and just all kinds of stuff.
It's nice to see that a lot of the social, emotional recommendations were actually already acting on.
Right.
And some of the things that they were talking about in terms of reacting to the opioid crisis, our youth safety committee, which involves more than just Eastlaw Meadow Public Schools, and the police department, and the Health and Human Services Department, were actually a little bit ahead in terms of how we're responding.
Right. And they are so closely related, too. Because, you know, if you're not feeling good about yourself, you're gonna turn to things that aren't so good. So, it was, it was a good conference, a lot of good stuff.
And anything special for you while you were there?
You got your award.
Yes, thank you. I got my all-star district award, so that's very nice.
Pictures right up on the webpage, anybody wants to see?
No need, but anyways, thank you.
One more, one more quick thing. Friday morning, I did moderate a panel, panel discussion on the opioid crisis. And I do have the PowerPoint, and I will send it out to everybody.
Oh, great. That's which is favorite.
Yeah. Which you can look at in an email at your leisure.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on is number four, the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. So this would be a point if anyone would like to come up and speak. Okay, so seeing none, we will move on.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to move item 7.2, the MIA waiver for both swimming and wrestling, to, right before the ELPS SMART goals.
Okay, so a motion's been made?
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward, 5-0. So at this point, I would like for Ms. McGee to please come and join us up at front. Excellent.
Thanks for seeing me. So as you know, the eighth grade waiver has never been done before at the high school. And I wanted to preface it with, I'm looking to be proactive with this waiver. And we are not giving up on the ninth through 12th graders' participation numbers to increase between now and when winter sports start. But I don't wanna be put in a position where we find out that we don't have enough wrestlers or enough swimmers. But if we have those participation numbers and sign-up numbers increase between now and the start of the season, then we wouldn't use the waiver. So it's looking to be proactive.
So the eighth grade waiver is not something that's new to the area. I think we have high schools in the area.
Yep.
Who are currently using it, such as West Springfield, Ludlow, Munson, South Hadley? Am I correct?
Correct. For swimming, those schools, and for wrestling, Northampton, Ludlow, and Athol.
You have numbers, past year's numbers, projected numbers this year?
Yes. So the projected numbers for boys swimming is 13 swimmers, nine through 12. For girls swimming, 11 swimmers, nine through 12. And for wrestling, eight wrestlers, grades nine through 12.
What happened?
So, boys swimming last year was in the 16 range, girls swimming was in the 15 range, and wrestling finished the year last year with six wrestlers. So, that's part of the reason why I wanna be proactive, to make sure we're not in that situation this year, so that we can finish the year, or start the year, with a larger number. The MIA has suggested numbers for each one. So the MIA suggests looking to apply for this waiver in swimming if you're at 12 or below, and in wrestling if you're at 22 or below.
Oh.
So we're way below with wrestling.
Swimming, we're right on that range. When I met with the athletic directors in the area, the athletic directors in the area approved it with the understanding that if our number and sign-ups increase between now and the start of the year, we would not use the waiver. So it's that understanding that we wouldn't use the waiver if more kids sign up between now and the start.
When do the seasons start?
So it's always the Monday after Thanksgiving.
A couple points, you had the fall, sorry, you had the winter sports night?
Yep.
Did any of these numbers change at all?
They're right around the same amount. Wrestling is, is still very low. I know the wrestling coaches are planning on coming in during lunch to try to recruit more wrestlers. So we're not giving up on the numbers that they're currently at. We're hoping that more students express interest.
So just one fine point, Ms. McGee.
Yep.
I mean, swimming is, to me, is easy because it's an individualized sport. Assure me that an eighth grader is not gonna go against some senior stud who's 18 years old. How can that be, how can you control that wrestling scenario of a contact sport of an eighth grader going against a senior?
Yep, that's a great question. I went to all of the wrestling matches that were home last year, and our coaches, we had a very inexperienced team last year. We had wrestlers to put in, for example, the 126 weight class at the varsity level, but our coaches knew that our wrestler would be overmatched in that 126 weight class. So our coaches chose ahead of time to forfeit the varsity match at 126, and then put that wrestler in a more competitive wrestling situation in a JV match on that same night. So the coaches before each match, they talk about each weight class, and they say, I have a really experienced wrestler in this weight class, and the other coach may not have a very experienced wrestler in that weight class, and they may choose the forfeit, even though they have people that are available to wrestle, just so that athletes are not put in a position where they're completely outmatched.
At least we do have an opt-out, okay.
Yep, and the coaches have those conversations ahead of time.
Are these numbers a lot lower than normal? Because I feel like they were higher a few years back.
Yes, so swimming was much higher a few years back. Wrestling is going on about three years, finishing the year under 10 wrestlers. But the swimming numbers have definitely dropped recently in the last years.
Do you know why that is? I mean, because I remember it being four times that, probably, at one point, and I, I believe the Marlins program's still pretty strong.
The Marlins program is really strong. The head coach of our team is also the Marlins coach, Brad Mills. I think, I'm speculating, but I think that a big reason why is some of those swimmers that do the Marlins are very well-rounded individuals, and they may choose to do a different sport in the wintertime than swimming. So maybe they're doing indoor track, maybe they're doing basketball. I think swimming is definitely a sport that has well-rounded individuals doing it, so they're looking to do other things than just swimming.
Is it the clubs, too, perhaps? Is that actually clubs? Kids going club only?
Yeah, I haven't heard that from our varsity coach, that kids are going to clubs.
Is it the pool? You don't have to answer that.
Thank you.
Just supporting information, the athletic subcommittee unanimously agreed.
Yes, we did.
On both, we took a separate vote for the swimming and for the wrestling, we unanimously agreed to support this waiver.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand how that fell off so much in swimming, being a former high school swimmer, so it's too bad. And I don't know if there's anything we can do to help, besides get a new pool, among other things. But I think with moving into these waivers, it'll give the kids better experience at the varsity level, and maybe that can spark a little bit of interest.
Do we know if we have half kids in eighth grade that are interested?
Yes, so at the eighth-
I mean, it's kinda cool for them, I suppose.
Yep, at the eighth grade level, there are eight boys swimmers who would be interested. There's five female swimmers that would be interested, and there's 13 eighth grade wrestlers that express interest. Whether or not they're actually gonna sign up and come out for the team is a different story, but that was the interest. Our coaches all went to the lunches at Bursen Park, and that was the students that were interested in at the eighth grade level.
You quartered, working with the other principal, Dr. Allen's far as eligibility, et cetera?
Correct. We'll meet, we'll, we'll talk about the eligibility. Our eligibility for winter sports is based on the grades, the report cards that come out on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll meet with Dr. Allen, we'll talk about the eighth grade eligibility.
And then transportation, do we have transportation from Bursen to here?
So we don't have transportation. It is a winter sport, so wrestling's practice time is 4:30 to 6:30. So I would assume that the wrestlers would go home and then come back for 4:30, and swimming tends to start around 2:30. But we don't have transportation lined up right now for the students from Bursen.
Do we have buses that go back in this direction after they pick up at Bursen, that come back like toward Bain Street to drop off from Bursen? And if, I mean, it helped out, and if there was room on the bus? See all the ifs?
There's a lot of ifs.
A lot of ifs, I mean, is that even a-
Well, why don't we look at that? Why don't we have Becky look at that as an option? I think- Well, I think if you get the waiver first and then-
You know, for the swimming, more than-
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, if we can do it, I think we should. But get the, get the waivers in place first, and then work, work on the other pieces.
Yep, okay. All right, so if we can-
I make a motion to approve the eighth grade MIA waiver for girls and boys swimming for the 2017-2018 school year.
You want separate for wrestling?
Yeah, we separate, yeah.
Oh, okay. So we have a motion made for the swimming.
I'll second.
And seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward, 5-0. And so now, if you'd like to offer up a second-
I make a motion to approve the eighth grade MIA waiver for wrestling for the 2017-2018 school year.
Okay, motion made?
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That carries forward, 5-0.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Ms. McGee.
Thank you.
You should move this one.
Do you wanna make a motion for that?
Yeah, I'm gonna move that we move up item 6.1, follow-up discussion, the public hearing is the next order of business.
Okay, I have a motion that's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward, 5-0. So what we just did was we moved up the follow-up discussion from the public hearing to the next order of business. So if we'd like to begin that discussion? Do you wanna add?
We have action steps? Three action steps?
Basically, what we need to do is we need to have some type of formal response to the petition, based on the discussion you had at the last school committee meeting. What was outlined was three action steps for this year, in terms of social studies department looking at how they might utilize the advisory time. Second action step was, social studies department was going to use, I believe, their PLC time to look at how they might align further with the Contemporary Issues course, because I believe there are 80% of the standards right now being hit by the Contemporary Issues course. And that is a course that, right now, is the most in demand of our elective courses. And then the third one is probably the most important, because it's looking at the standards, the draft standards and frameworks that come out of DESI sometime between December and February. I think the social studies department, along with Ms. Aneer, will be reviewing those and offering some feedback, which we did both with ELA and the math standards, when they went through the same process. And then ultimately, you would get new standards and frameworks, which would start to bring us into a situation where we have to align and make sure all our courses are aligning to any changes they've made.
Did we change court math courses, or add additional math courses with the math frameworks when we initiated the original math?
The revisions were primarily made within the courses that we had.
Within the courses.
Yeah. So it had to do with instructional and what we, the goals of the courses, but the courses remain the same.
So to sum up, we have three action steps.
Right.
That will bite us until the curriculum frameworks come out in, what, is it 2018, 2019?
They're coming out.
About this year.
They'll come out for public comment, starting in February or March.
Okay.
Similar to what we did in math in ELA, when they were released for public comment, we had teams of teachers looking at those and providing feedback back to the state. And then the state plans to bring them to the Board of Ed in June to vote whether those, whether finalized standards will be adopted.
So we seem to be in a very, very effective place right now. We had, I'm putting all the information together that I've gone through with this. We had that very strong presentation back in June from social studies department. We had the public hearing, and now we've got action steps that will bite us until the new curriculum frameworks come out. I think that should be our answer to the petition of Mr. Smith. Kind of capsing all that we've done, and then awaiting what's gonna, the curriculum frameworks are gonna say in 2018.
Yeah.
I mean, we've taken it seriously. We've engaged a lot of different staff, including students. I think we're at a point now where the level can be very forthcoming and very positive of all that we've done.
Yeah. I like the idea of seeing what the standards will look like also, and seeing what changes that will be coming our way before we implement anything drastic to our department also.
Right. Yeah, I would, I advise the same, that, similar to what we've done with other curriculum framework revisions, is that we have the staff look at them, we go through, find, do a gap analysis, and determine what, if any, changes need to be made. Typically, it, there could be changes to how we engage the students, maybe your sequencing of your curriculum. But to make a shift or an addition now would probably be ill-advised, knowing that we would have to, we'd be right back in that same boat a year from now, after we dig into it with the staff.
I think we talked about also, not a, not a lack of, but not a large emphasis on local government. We don't know if that's gonna be addressed soon, or now, or within-
I think within those action steps, that those are gonna be some of the discussions in the social studies department. How we're, whether you're utilizing some of the activities you do in coursework, or you're utilizing, I think one of the examples was using advisory, especially senior advisory for voter registration.
I also wanted to just add that I do not want to give the impression that local government is not covered. I can tell you, it was just an contemporary issues class, and Ms. Ruger was kind of going over the elements, the structure, and so forth. So it is being done, maybe not at the-
That's an elective, though.
Correct.
How many, you have, what, eight, seven sections?
Five.
Five sections?
Yeah, but still, it's hitting a lot of students.
Well, that's almost close to 100 students, I'm sure.
Yeah, so we are, you know.
That's primarily a June, a senior elective, only a June senior elective.
Correct.
All right. So do we need to make a motion for some sort of direction to Mr. Smith, and something we vote on for?
That would be helpful.
I make a motion that Ms. Smith formally respond to the petitioner with what we've outlined, which is three action steps, and that we are waiting also the ESE with the new curriculum frameworks 2018.
All right, so I have a motion has been made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward, 5-0.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're, okay, so we are now moving on to presentations. We have superintendent's report, 5.1.1, Eastlaw Meadow Public School District's SMART goals presentation.
Okay, you have the leadership team here, I'll invite them up, and Ms. Aneer will probably hook into the TVs behind us.
I know, you have the screen.
Now that everybody's comfortably seated, okay? On the screens around the perimeter of the room, you'll see our presentation, as well as throughout, you'll hear many different people presenting and offering insight into our SMART goals for the 2017-2018 school year. Just a quick review, SMART goals, basically, it's an acronym, specific goals that are measurable, attainable, yet challenging, relevant, because it's essential to improving student achievement, and timely. And the key to all of this is that as you're putting them in place, you wanna make sure you're thinking about how you're supporting every student across the grade level and across the district. District mission, basically, it's our mission to promote achievement and accountability in all that we do with our students, while also making sure that we're always aware and preparing them with skill sets that will enable them to take on the challenges of tomorrow. Do we have action? Basically, we feel if we do all of what I just described in an environment that is respectful and nurturing, and we develop the collaborative leadership across the district, we should be equipping our students as they move through pre-K through 12 with strong 21st century skills. So you have, just to bring you back just quickly, you're gonna see in this presentation the transition between what the department's calling the legacy MCAS, which is still at the high school level, and the next generation MCAS, which we gave a quick tutorial on at the last school committee meeting, because how they are now presenting the scoring is much different. So the first few charts are giving you the legacy MCAS from our 10th graders. Ms. Aneer, walk us through. She added some nice percentages there, because it can be confusing. You have a district score, and you have a school score. As we do have students who are outplaced, who take the MCAS.
So pretty much that's it.
Sorry.
But this is the ELA.
Take it away, Ms. Aneer.
Yeah, already done. So, sorry that, it looks like it moved on the screen from the Google slides into PowerPoint, but it's, so at the district level, we're 95% of our ELA students were at the proficient and advanced, combining those two. If you look at just the students who are educated within our school building, it was 98%. And then you can see how that compares to the state.
When we go to the next generation MCAS, are those designations gone?
Yes.
Correct. They'll follow, they'll follow the 3-8 criteria that you'll see on the slides.
Your scale scoring has changed, and your range of where students can fall has changed.
So for math, again, this is the 10th grade, so this is on the legacy assessment, the one that we're familiar with for the past few decades. 84% of our district were at the advanced or proficient. Again, compared to those educated within our school buildings, it was 87% versus the state, at 79%. So the next few slides, we combine 3-8 together, and we're giving you more of a global look at how we're doing, because you'll hear individualized information at the school levels. So here's the difference-
So this begins, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, this begins the next generation, so.
So you'll notice that the grading scale looks a little differently. You have exceeding expectations, meeting, partially meeting, and not meeting. And Mr. Fitzgerald, I know you were at our last meeting where we showed how those scores compared, you're gonna see that the percentages look lower, but that's across the state, and they're more aligned with how we perform on the NAP assessment. And in that, in those examples of the NAP that we presented at the last meeting, we still rank number one in those, in those assessments, for fourth and eighth, fourth and eighth grade, ELA and math.
Partially meeting expectations does not necessarily mean that students are going to be, if we think of our response to intervention, you know, that you're going to now put them into core plus more. It depends on where they're falling, and how their teacher's seeing that, and how we continuously monitor and reteach regarding the needs that each student has.
So although our percentages look lower, it's important to remember that this is baseline, that that's like the word of the year. These are baselines, the baseline scores. They are not to be used to be compared to previous year's scores, and that's because the assessment scales are different, the content was a little different, the standard setting that they underwent is different. So we're, we're at 59% of our students were in the exceeding and the meeting expectations across grades 3 through 8 for ELA, and, and then for the state, it was at 49. So we're still outperforming the state level.
Was that expected of 50%?
Yes.
Really?
Yep.
Any intentionals?
Well, it's not, you know what it is? The standard setting changed.
Yeah.
Not necessarily how students perform, you know, you can't, you can't compare it to our performance from the previous year.
Right.
So it had to do with the scale changing, how they set the standards of what, what is gonna be the cutoff for meeting and exceeding.
So will the scale be changed, or?
The scale has changed.
Scale has changed.
It has changed.
Yeah, this is scale, okay.
So, well, and the actual how you get into each one has changed as well.
Right.
Now, I know we don't have to, I'm sorry, worry about 10th grade yet, but at what point do you not graduate? Because it just says you're not meeting expectations.
They haven't set that compensatory certification.
It's like they don't want to use the word fail. Is that the fact?
They don't, and I, I kind of commend the fact that, very little, but as the fact that these are more positive performance descriptors is a move in the right direction.
Well, it took them long enough to realize that they were demoralizing people with what they, how they were portraying it.
But if you remember, students could score in the needs improvement, and as long as they stayed on an educational proficiency plan for that subject area, they could still move towards graduation. It's a certain level of needs improvement.
Right.
So I'm assuming, although they have not set this yet, you're going to see something in that higher range of partially meeting expectations, and maybe they utilize the educational proficiency plans once again, maybe it's a new acronym with the same scale, with the same meaning.
Yeah.
I just want my family to leave alone. When I look, when I look at these results, was the state disappointed in the scores? Because I feel like we know what these kids in the state can accomplish, and are they tweaking their tests now?
I don't know how the state...
You know, it was just kind of like, come on, 59%?
I don't know how they felt, but I do know that...
Last year it was...
Right, but it's a whole different ball of wax, right?
They said nothing, no.
It's a completely different assessment, different way to look at it. But if you remember, this is, if you look, I wish, I should have put it in, but the NAEP skill...
We had it in last, yeah, last presentation.
It was in the last meeting. They score typically in the 50th, you know, in the 50% of the proficient and above, however the NAEP skill, you know, puts the wording around that, won't say exceeding expectations and meeting, but same difference, right? And yet, even though we, the amount of students who are proficient or above on the NAEP, if you chunk out where Massachusetts is, we're still number one in the nation for, or across the NAEP, the NAEP assessment takers in fourth grade math, fourth grade ELA, or reading, and in eighth grade reading and eighth grade math. So while this looks like dramatically lower, it is a better comparison between the NAEP and the current, the next gen. So we're still outperforming others as a state.
I don't have a problem with our performance, because I, I'm just saying the state's playing, okay.
One of the ways they're presenting it, at least in the conference calls, is that Massachusetts has always been a leader in terms of providing standards and frameworks and in their assessment, and they continue to be a leader because they've now increased the rigor, they've increased and changed the standards, and they're expecting more, and they feel that the school systems and the students will be able to get there.
Well, at least you guys have a long wait to 100.
By getting there, do you mean meeting expectations? So we have 35%...
They haven't defined that piece yet.
If we have 35% partially meeting expectations, are we concerned that our pace is not quick enough? It's not the right word, I know, but...
Not yet. I don't think we can draw that type of conclusion. I think we have to remember that this is baseline, and when we take the assessment again next year and we compare it to what our baseline was, that's when we can start making a little bit more assumptions and, and making some more clear statements around how we feel students are doing.
Okay.
It's, it's, I know it sounds like we're like, ah, it's baseline, just take it as it is, but it really is, it's baseline, we don't know. But we do know that the majority of our students, even though the scale is harder to get at these levels, we're still, you know, almost 60% of our students are there and it's baseline. So we can only hope to, to continue to, to progress in how we, how we achieve on this. And it's one measure, it's important to note that this is one measure.
No, I know.
And in the mid-cycle and the end of year, we'll see more data around how did we do on our internal assessments as well, and how, how will that compare to the next generation MCAS next year when we see what our results are.
Okay.
So this is the, the same graph for math, three to eight, and again, while we would love to see higher numbers at baseline, and we are above the state. And then we gave you a district look at the science assessment, and this is, this is not next gen, this is the current assessment, and we are outperforming the state here as well. And we've seen some growth compared to previous years.
We've seen growth in the out of needs improvement in the warning.
We have, yeah, we've seen some movement to the left, if you will, of that chart, so we're seeing more people get out of the, mostly the warning failing and going into needs improvement, but we're moving them over.
And there's no support necessarily for science? Additional support, additional tiered, there's no tiered?
RTI, our tiered intervention is primarily math and ELA, and, and that doesn't mean that there's not extra help sessions that are available for students in science?
It's not formalized.
Well, it depends on...
The principals and the system principals might be able to speak to it, but I think some of our co-curricular enrichment that's going on in elementary and in the middle school, I think starts to help with that.
It would look different, it'd be like extra help as opposed to an intervention. Targeted intervention, ELA and math has been proven to help performance in other content areas, whereas if there's a deficit in, in science, it's more, takes on the, a different lens. It's not a targeted intervention, it's additional support and help through content teachers and additional time on learning.
Good.
Okay, so just a quick summary of the district data, we, as you saw, continue to achieve at a high level across all grade levels in ELA and math. To answer Mr. Thompson's question, we are seeing improvements in achievement on the science assessments, especially at different grade levels, reducing that, the percentage in the warning and failing category. And as Ms. Neer has said through a number of these slides, this is baseline data for the next generation MCAS, and we were happy to be higher than the state in the aggregate, and we're going to continue to work at that, and we only can go up, which is good. So you could go down, but we're planning on going up.
We're going to be optimistic, going up.
So that takes us into our first SMART goal, which basically is looking at our standards-based instructional program and making sure that we're staying current with both state standards and national standards where appropriate.
So some of our action steps around this would be something we already mentioned this evening, which would be curriculum committees and groups of staff coming together to take a look at the standards, making sure that we're on track with, with aligning to them and implementing them. We, as a team, as a leadership team, will be looking at the digital literacy and computer science standards together.
Is this a whole framework?
Yeah.
Well, it's a revised one.
It's a new, yeah.
It's a revised one, they've, we've had science and technology standards.
Right.
They've gone under a large overhaul, and so we're going to spend time learning as a team.
So they're, they're under the science frameworks?
No.
They are their own thing.
Their own.
They are their own.
So LCS.
They are their own.
It's their own framework.
Okay, so it's a new, whole new?
I was going to ask about that.
Yes, new title, but we've always had an instruction, there have been technology standards in the past.
But they're embedded in the science frameworks?
They were, attempted to be embedded throughout.
Right, now...
But now they're saying, no, this has to be a focus area all until...
Oh, so, okay.
And so they've added to it then?
They're much more revamped than the previous version. They've undergone a large, a large shift, and so we're going to look at that together as a team, and individually the schools are looking at them, and we will develop a, what an implementation plan might look like.
Actually, we're going to invite Mr. Quimby into that, and he's been working already with Ms. Neer and me to look at that and see what impacts, because it's going to impact not only the schools and how we instruct, but it's going to impact what technology equipment we have, and obviously how our network is in terms of how robust it is.
And new curriculum?
Eventually.
We're going to take a look at what we, when we look at the standards, what are we currently doing and covering, how are we covering it, I mean, can it be embedded within current instruction, does it have to be additional?
Right.
What does that instruction look like, what kind of format? So that's some of the work that we're going to do as a team together.
Wow.
And then the last thing, one of the key actions across the district is that schools continue to incorporate a peer observation and reflection process, and each of the schools has kind of taken on its own life with that to best suit the needs of their, of their schools.
Okay, I'll turn it over to our elementary principals for goal one.
Okay, I'll go first. So the staff and elementary schools who meet regularly in grade level team, subject area teams, will analyze data using Mastery Connect to plan instruction and meet student needs. In addition to Mastery Connect, I think we all are enriched with data in a lot of areas, the teacher assessments that happen in the classroom, some of the exit ticket assessments that happen in mathematics, the mid-modular assessments, we still use STAR for intervention groups and progress monitoring. And our teachers are very committed to teaming around student learning in general and making decisions and actions going forward. We're really proud of a lot of the work that they do and their willingness to team together and collaborate. Students create, collaborate, and communicate using technology. I think the, the Google Suite has really helped a lot of our schools and the students engage in technology in ways that are committed to collaboration and creativity. I know that at least at the fourth grade level and beyond, students use the Google Classroom format for collaborative work, revising work, communicating with teachers and peers, having peer revision groups, posting assignments, and improving their work all the time using that platform. And students participate in a process that allows for peer observation, staff, I'm sorry, peer observation and reflection, and, and like Valeneer has said, that's sort of taken on a role differently in all of our schools. I know that our teachers are very committed to this during their staff meeting time, where their common planning time, they'll come up with who they're going to observe, when they're going to observe them, why they're going to observe them, or if they're going to be observed themselves. Sometimes they decide that they want to see a coach model lesson, so they'll observe the coach, they'll observe in teams, they'll observe sometimes in isolation, ask for coverage for certain things they want to work on that's connected to their educator plan. One thing that we just did recently in peer observation, and we'll talk about it a little more, I think, further on in this presentation around curriculum, is that both Mountain View and Maple Shade were doing a new writing program called Being a Writer in grades three and four, are really engaged in that. I think all the teachers in three and four have given really positive feedback. But the developers of the Being a Writer program from the Center for Collaborative Classroom came to Maple Shade, did a pre-meeting to do an overview of the curriculum, taught our students in our school, and then the Maple Shade and Mountain View teachers observed the teaching, and then had a debriefing afterwards in the building to discuss next steps for the program. So I thought that was a great example of peer observation and reflection, even with an outsider coming in, and then the coaches will take it from there.
Sorry, you can go to Lisa.
Did you want to add to? You can add, yeah, let them add to goal one.
You want to go next?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Well, Michael already talked about the peer observation and reflection that we're sharing with the Being a Writer program. Another cool thing that's been happening is I've been doing the mini-observation model at Mountain View, which means I observe my teachers for five to 15 minutes multiple times a year instead of doing one observation, and some of my teachers have been asking to join me in classrooms, and you'll see it in some of the pictures after, while I'm doing these observations. So that's been really cool. We also have release time where I'll set up coverage for teachers to go in and observe their colleagues teaching math, ELA, science, so that's been great, too. Just to piggyback on the Google Suite, about half of my classroom teachers are using Google Classroom every day, so they can interact with the students both at home and in the classroom with assignments. They do a lot of writing and peer editing, and my teachers have been meeting, we've been using staff meeting time and their monthly curriculum meeting time to do data analysis and work on curriculum.
So we have time set aside at our monthly grade level planning time where teachers, they decide on the student work or the common assessment or the data that they're going to be analyzing, and then they plan next steps for instruction. So we're going to continue to do that. They're also going to be inputting more additional formative assessment into Mastery Connect this year.
And with the district's help, we were able to expand our technology within the building, where in addition to our iPad carts, Chromebook carts, MacBook carts, we are able to build on the iPads that are actually stored in the classroom this year for routine use, bringing it up to eight iPads in each kindergarten and first grade classroom, and three in each second grade along with two Chromebooks, and those are used in various ways depending on the grade level, it could look drastically different in a kindergarten room versus a second grade room. They're used a lot in centers for apps like BookFlix, which they can use for a listening center and listen to books on tape and actually see the story in front of them on the computer. Math apps like Xern, and the PTO actually helped us purchase this year some handwriting apps that go along with our handwriting program.
And then Valerie Aneer just alerted us recently that we're going to have some educators from another district that are actually coming to observe our teachers in our reading workshop model, so we're excited about that. But as far as the peer observation reflection, it's really occurred in pockets within our building, and this is something that we've been trying to really encourage and foster over the past few years. So one of the things that we're doing is we brought it up to our advisory to pack, and that's number one on our agenda at our next meeting, because we really need to find a way to really communicate this coming from the teachers, not just from administration, so that we have a systematic way, process, so that it makes it easy for teachers to observe one another.
At Burson, the focus is very similar to the elementary's you said, we're still giving all of our common assessments slash DBAs. The big step for us this year is aligning them to next generation MCAS. I did four MCAS presentations with small groups of teachers last week, and we went through all the practice items they've released, next generation MCAS, and just sort of started analyzing how our kids did and what the next steps are. So obviously, everybody's talking about that bar has, is being raised, and so like the teachers are certainly in the mode that they keep moving the cheese, but it keeps working because math stays on top, so now we have to get our DBAs to match the MCAS as far as the level of rigor and the types of questions they're asking. Then we also have to, the second bullet here is we, we have to get back, and I don't even know if it'll be this year as much as it'll be next year, but we have to get good at analyzing data again, from, going from like creating DBAs to having Edwin, to Edwin failing, to learning Mastery Connect, to now next generation MCAS, it's like we're always trying to rewrite the test to, to, to lead us into the right kind of achievement. And I definitely think at Burson, we have to get a little more refocused at all you, all the things you can do with the data. We're, we're constantly changing and improving how we get the data, and I think that's our next step, is to get back to what we do with the data, which we still do when we have data meetings, but I know it could be done better. Third bullet is definitely to keep analyzing our targeted intervention classes, our tiered reading and tiered math classes, still very proud of those, had a lot of students get out after first marking period and a ton go in. So we just need to keep our eyes on those and make sure that we're maximizing the achievement of the students in them. And then, yes, the peer observation process, we love that at Burson, we've done one walk around so far this year, which means every teacher in the building has been into two other people's classrooms, then we share feedback. And at this point, the teachers voted this year to have one regular, what we call walk around, which just takes place over two days, and then we're doing two peer observation cycles. And the big thing that's going to happen this year for us in peer observations is people are going to start going to other schools, so be, be it in town or be it to middle schools out of town. We've had a lot of success with this, and a lot of people have, are eager to go elsewhere, so we're going to be doing some lease days for people to spend half days at other schools and, you know, we, we sort of networking around the area. Oh, I, I have pictures in there, right. Next, on the left there, that's our second makerspace which we opened this year. All of that furniture was donated by Closing Laboratory or something?
That was a medical lab on Jager Road.
Yeah, Mr. Fredette and I did about seven or eight runs in my minivan, and then they also gave us a truck. So we were able to build this whole other workspace with all this wonderful furniture, and so that's just an example of a teacher that brought her kids up there working on some stuff with their laptops.
Our room is that? Is that the room where you were storing?
It's a back corner, it used to be a computer lab.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah, that is really nice.
That is really cool.
Yeah, we're excited for it. And then on the right...
That's like my school.
I, I feel like we built that class to kind of look like what classrooms should look like soon, like, there's everybody standing except there's a table in the corner where you can sit 10 kids in a small group and do more focus with a whiteboard in the back corner, so. Then on the right, it was just a cool moment, it was reviewing for a science assessment, and they were doing what's called a snowball fight, so kids wrote questions on paper, then they chuck them at each other for 20 seconds to get out their middle school energy, and then they pick them up, find a partner, and discuss the question, and then they ball it back up, have another snowball fight and try again, so. A nice way to engage students and sort of review together.
Dr. John, a quick question, just to stay consistent, technology, Google Suite, Google Classroom, where are you at those?
Yeah, so we have, we have a lot of awesome things with our technology. Certainly, the Google Suite has really taken hold, especially my English department at all three levels. We have a social studies curriculum that's web-based in seventh and eighth, so, I'm sorry, in sixth and seventh, we're one-to-one in those classrooms in sixth and seventh, so you walk in at any time, and students are doing their social studies work on the computer with the, with the teach as, teacher as more of a coach. So I guess my answer would just be yes. We have seen just a complete blow-up of use of technology, and if anything, the teachers are just hungry, hungry for more technology, frankly. are just hungry for more technology, frankly.
So the first slide from high school. I guess I'll just address the Google Suite part. It is widely used at the high school, especially when writing grades and stuff. It's always impressed upon me how much more user-friendly our Google Suite and our Google classrooms are than some of our other options. It's especially prevalent in our ELA, social studies, and...
Keep going.
Sorry about that. So getting to the side. So with our standards-based instruction and tying it into our 21st century learning goals, I mean, if you start with the image on the left, you can see our, some of our science classes, all of our science classes are actually using all of the new microscopes that the school district and committee were kind enough to fund throughout the year. That's really increased the amount of engagement in a number of our science classes. And if we're looking at the next step with that, we actually just saw something pretty cool at VASQ that's a little cheaper than all these microscopes. So if you're looking for that, P.O., we'll just slide it to you another day. We also have, we always make sure that we have scheduled data meetings into our collaborative times, our department meeting times, and some of our half-day PD release times to make sure that we're utilizing Mastery Connect and our common assessments in a continuous and strategic way. More examples from the classroom, we have a teacher, Mr. Lee, doing some role-playing with one of his classes to really impress upon his students. In this example, it was the conversation about starting the National Bank with the early Americans, so just kind of using different teaching methods to try and learn the standards that are presented. And then our last picture is, in addition to our learning logs and the more formal things we try to do with our peer observations, one of the things that we really wanted to do this year was really encourage people to just go in each other's rooms. So we've had the pineapple theme since Commencation Day, where Dr. Flanagan put together a nice welcoming pineapple presentation explaining its meaning of hospitality and welcoming. That same day, every teacher received a laymate placard with a pineapple. There's a pineapple board in the first floor faculty room, so that people know that something really exciting and engaging is going on in this room at this time, so please feel free to come in. And throughout the year, we've been doing our best to continue that, continue encouraging that. So for example, everybody received a pineapple card before the meeting. Those cards, if we notice that somebody's really doing something fun or exciting or engaging in the classroom and doesn't have their placard up, make sure to either hang one on their door, or put it in their mailbox, or email a pineapple emoji to them until you get back on the wall. Really just trying to basically encourage people to just naturally go into each other's rooms, because there's a lot of great things going on in our classrooms, and we want everybody to feel that there's a, to our safety policy, locked, but yeah, open door in every room throughout the day.
So the pineapple's hung outside the classroom on the wall, and you see that gate. Let me go in?
Yeah, that's the idea.
Look at that picture. Do you see that picture? That's Mrs. Forwards' room. So she put a pineapple outside her front door.
And then one other question, because Mrs. Aneer was very powerful in that town council meeting back, when was that, March, about the science, need for science curriculum? Do we get textbooks, too?
The high school did primarily equipment.
We've got AP books as well.
We did get textbooks, okay.
Majority of their funds.
That was a one-time?
The one-time amount went to the equipment.
Oh, okay.
And then the textbooks, we were able to do through our budget.
Good.
District Smart Goal two, so here we're looking to have 100% of our teachers engage students in productive and innovative 21st century learning experiences to ensure that all students are prepared to contribute responsibly in a global society. And then that gets broken out in your packets. You have a copy of the district goals.
Yep.
It's broken out quite a bit in that draft of the goals. But a couple key action steps on the next slide.
So here you'll see that, one of the major ones, that we're engaging students at all levels in instructional, that allows them to develop and apply 21st century skills. And we kind of break out what some of those attributes would be. So we want them to be problem solvers, be inquirers, knowledgeable, be able to communicate and collaborate with one another, which is really what the workforce is looking for us all to do. And this is done through the context of their core instruction, not in addition to, but through their course learning. In order for that to happen, we're also going to work to continue to establish physical learning spaces, like some that you've seen in the slides before, that are more flexible and adaptable and allowing the students to collaborate with one another and to interact differently. And that this can happen anywhere in the school building, not necessarily in the four walls of the classroom, so you'll see some examples of that as well. And then, all of this does not happen just magically. We need to continue to provide professional development opportunities to staff in developing and implementing what those learning experiences look like for them. So we'll provide some PD as well.
So the elementary steps for that goal is implement professional development to support 21st century learning skills and experiences. I feel like I'm very proud of the teachers and how they're constantly developing themselves professionally, whether they go off-site, or they do work internally, embedded with their colleagues, or with the coaching model that we have. I assume that they're always improving something, and it's really a two-way street with things that they want, and I can support them with, or things that I feel like we should be aware of, and we're sort of driving our curriculum forward, which is better for students. So one thing that I was particularly proud of, I mentioned the Being a Writer program that we're starting to use with Mountain View, so I won't repeat that, but before we started the Makerspace project at Burson, I went to a three-day training at MIT, and I learned that MIT has a whole section to kindergarten to 12th grade education, whether it's private or public, and they do professional development there. And what they do is they do their PD in what they call Maker Lodges, because of the MIT Beavers, so instead of Makerspaces, they have Maker Lodges. So I thought that was cute. And after I went to my first Makerspace training there, I was hooked, like the things that they are developing educators to do really are exciting. So I put out the MIT agenda of professional development options to some of my teams, and one was focused specifically on electronics. And in the fourth grade curriculum frameworks, one of the standards has to do with transfer of energy. So they went to the electronics training, not just one teacher, all five of the fourth grade teachers went as a team. I thought that was spectacular. So I had to find the money for it, which we did. And then they came back with ideas on hovercrafts and wind turbines and using multimeters. So they're going to do project-based learning around that, and I felt like that really encapsulated what that action step is, what we're trying to do. Physical learning spaces, we do stand-up desk and table spaces. A lot of our classrooms, almost all of them, have tables instead of desks with your things in them. The environments are much more flexible, there's mobile technology. Conversations, as long as they're on target, are now celebrated rather than quieted, so that's really excellent. And creating project-based learning opportunities, we do a lot of things in that area. So we do our immigration simulation, our invention convention, electronics and transfer of energy project we're going to be getting, motion and design, mag levitation systems, water filtering. We've got a Stars Cultural Council grant for Makerspace and STEM engineering, and that will be for every student in Makerspace in February. We engage in robotics, we're starting with Arduino, which is a new endeavor of ours that I'm really excited about. We do investigations and testing questions and designing and developing models. Those are all things around project-based learning that we're really trying to improve. It's not perfect, but we try our best every day, we really do, we're really proud of that. So that's our section.
So for professional development at Mountain View, we plan it all with the principal's advisory committee. And this year, our focus is on really creating the 21st century learning skills of working collaboratively and targeting instruction, differentiating instruction. So October, we had a menu of options. I had a lot of teachers work together on how they can create better centers or stations in their classrooms in every subject area. Technology integration, and the high school was kind enough to let some of my staff come to the diversity training. So for like Norma Campbell and Amy Pelzak, that was a good option because they're not in the classroom. In December, we have Kim Marshall coming, who I'm really excited about, to talk about differentiated instruction specifically with having centers or stations in the classroom. And then the rest of the year, we're going to be focusing on growth mindset, which the staff and the kids have really latched on to. In terms of physical learning spaces, just like Michael said, at Maple Shade, most of my classrooms have tables now instead of desks. We have different setups around the classrooms. You'll often come into Mountain View and also see kids in the hall on the floor, or in their classroom on the floor, working in pairs or in small groups. And for project-based learning, for the last several years, I've been paying for a license for a website called the PBL Project. And what that does is offers teachers in all subject areas ideas for project-based learning, and it integrates the four major subject areas into each project. So for example, Catherine Hogan in fourth grade, for the last several years, I know some of you have seen it, has done the History of Esang Meadow project, where the kids learn everything about the town of Esang Meadow and where that came from. The PBL project was originally for kids to encourage tourism to their town, but she felt like they couldn't really encourage tourism if the kids didn't know about the town. So they learn everything about the quarries, they find all the historical homes in the town, and they do these huge presentations. So if you haven't been, you're more than welcome to come this year when she does it. So that website is being accessed by all the teachers, and they can integrate it into all the subject areas.
I just have a question about, oh, actually, does it be, I don't think we've gotten down to those photos yet, so I'll just...
So this year, we're beginning our PD, the first five to 10 minutes, with a teacher that's volunteering to showcase the different ways that they're utilizing technology to enhance learning in the classroom. So we actually had one of our brand-new teachers, Valerie Sousa, who shared with teachers a communication app that she's using with families and parents that fosters two-way communication. And afterwards, it was great. You know, we had a good number of teachers that are trying that out as well. We also, our coaches will be modeling inquiry-based lessons across the curriculum, math, reading, writing, which really highlights critical thinking, communication, and collaboration. And also, in some of our upcoming PD, we're really going to break down and share and discuss what 21st century learning skills look like. It's a big buzzword, right? We talk about it a lot. What are we doing right now that does encourage and foster it, and what can we do across the curriculum?
Similar to Maple Shade and Mountain View, 99% of our classrooms have moved away from desks to a more tabled format, and we've also started with the standing desks in classrooms as well, and we've been lucky enough to get a set of those for the last two years through the Eleaf grant. And Carol Dunn's been responsible for writing that grant and shared with me today that it's her hope to keep expanding on that so that there's at least one in every classroom in the building. And you'll see some pictures of that in an upcoming slide. As far as project-based learning, we have a lot of kind of exciting things starting in pockets around the building. We've purchased a subscription for the school to the Mystery Science website, which encourages a lot of project-based inquiry, science explorations, along with the kits that the district is able to purchase for science. We've started a kindergarten pilot in two of our classrooms. It was developed as a collaboration between the Boston Public Schools, a number of local universities, and the Department of Early Childhood Education. Our hope is to start that in a small group and then begin expanding it. That pilot is really focused on promoting creativity, collaboration, and communication, and critical thinking skills, so it really goes right along with those district's Smart Goals. It still includes the direct instruction, small group and whole group, and it includes the workshop model, but it really focuses on interdisciplinary centers and themes. So the science and arts and dramatic play and everything are incorporated in through teacher-guided center work in the afternoon. And then, one of the PDs that is being presented at the district is growing out of some of the work that our math coach, Lee Boland, is doing at our school, and that involves three act tasks, which is really bringing some inquiry-based math learning experiences that are pretty interesting to see going on, where the first act is the hook or the engagement, and it's done with either a photo or super-short video clip. For example, one of the ones I watched today was in a kindergarten classroom, and they had a birthday celebration in the video clip, and it was a cake with candles on it, stack of cups and plates, and some bags, and that's all that was there. And the kids are asked, what do you notice about this? What do you wonder about it? And they came up with all different things, like there's blue candles and yellow candles, there's cups. And then they start with their wonderings. I wonder how many candles? I wonder what's in the bags? And from there, the second act is to narrow that down to one question, and the kids get to then do some information seeking, where they ask you all different questions. So if you want to know how many candles altogether, we need to know how many blue and how many yellow there are in order to figure that out, and it kind of builds from there. And then the teams go off and actually solve whatever the question was, and come back and discuss how all the different kids in the class solved it in different ways, but still got to the same answer. And that's being presented at the district PD tomorrow. And then on the next slide, I think we move into the pictures. And you'll see one of our students, Charlie Riesus, on the left there. Every year, the kids have the option of doing an enrichment project through GNT, and it's an optional thing. They get to choose something that they want to learn more about and sort of do an independent study on that. And this was a great example of technology. It was an awesome presentation to watch. Charlie is very entertaining to begin with, but to see him do a PowerPoint was really enlightening, because most of the kids did a poster board presentation, and he was up there with his PowerPoint. He did that, he imported the pictures, he imported the videos, and he had a cute little signal for his teacher for putting his hand up every time he wanted her to change the slide. So it was amazingly seamless for a second grader.
I can't wait to see his senior project.
He was teaching Mary Beth how to do something, and she had to kind of slow him down a little bit because he was getting ahead of her. And then you'll see there, one of our standing desks. We have currently seven of those in the building, along with four pedal bikes, which aren't actually bikes, but they're like the pedals of a bike, but just on the floor, so the kids can have them under their seat and pedal while they're doing their work if they want to.
So is that table adjustable?
Yes. Yeah, and it's a footbar, so that they can push on the footbar.
You can swing it.
If they want some input.
Oh, just for their activity, okay. So it doesn't actually?
You can swing the leg. No, but the table is adjustable.
So they can stand there, or stand there and use the pedal, or sit at their desk and use the pedal bikes.
It is amazing to see students using this, but using it in a way where it's not disruptive thing.
Yeah, they learn quickly.
I honestly, some of the classrooms that these are in, I was in one the other day and didn't even notice, until I honed in on it and said, oh my gosh, he's been there at the standing desk the entire time, and it blended in with what all the other kids were doing, and didn't stand out in any way.
You've kind of started to change culture in actually all the buildings with furniture and stuff. So to your point, you wouldn't notice it because it's blending right in. Oh, yeah, definitely.
So these pictures from Mountain View really show the things I was talking about for both Smart Goal one and two, mainly flexible grouping, working with technology, and working in centers. So in the top picture, those are fourth graders, and even though, when I say centers or stations, in our school, that doesn't mean the kids have to necessarily move around the room. They're working on different things at different times, but within their, they can be in their own seat. So these kids are, this is a classroom with desks, obviously, but they're in a group, and they're working on different projects. Some have computers, some don't. The picture on the left is grade three, and these are actually moving centers. So the kids in the front of the picture are working on Lexia, which is a reading program to help with all areas of reading. And the picture right behind them is the para working with another group on word study, so vocabulary and spelling. In the very back of the room, the teacher has kids on the rug, and she has a guided reading group, and in her classroom... And in her classroom, she switches these every 20 minutes, so the kids rotate through all areas of the room at that time. And on the bottom right is a 5th grade classroom, and this actually was the day I was doing one of my observations. The teacher on the left, in the gray sweater, is a 4th grade teacher who happened to see me, starting to go around and ask if she could come with me. And the teacher is with one guided reading group, a para has another one. And they write to each other through Google Classroom, creating comprehension questions using Bloom's taxonomy, which I'm going to try to convince this teacher to do at a PD the next time we have a menu of options. So, it's, she's also, her last name is Creelman. We have, she has a Chromebook card outside her room that has a sign on it that says Creo Books, because she monopolizes them all day long and gets in arguments. So, that's just examples of all SMART Bowl I and II.
So, on the left there, I wanted to show how students communicate and collaborate in a classroom, as well as the flexible environment. And also, they're engaging in science, so they're trying to develop testable questions that they can actually test in the science classroom. So, they have African dwarf frogs there, dwarf toads, and they're developing questions that they're wondering about, that they can actually conduct experiments on to see if they're, can draw some concrete conclusions in the classroom, which would be wonderful. And then, on the right-hand side, that's a classroom that was cleared out of space because they're doing force and motion, motion and design. So, those are vehicles where you wind up rubber bands for potential energy and kinetic energy. And then, they chart based on how many winds after they construct and build their vehicle, the distance they will travel, and then they graph all of their data, and make comparisons to other groups with their designs for their models. So, those are really robust, flexible environments, where students collaborate and communicate and engage in quality learning experiences. So, I chose those photographs.
So, at Birchland, as far as the physical learning spaces, we have really, over the last two years now, tried to change the feel of our school. We ordered our first 36 stand-up desks this past summer, so every classroom has at least one. We'll hope to order more soon. Those have had great success so far. We have, if you've walked around Birchland lately, you've seen red collaborative tables in like every hallway. So, we've tried to build a lot of working areas that are out in the hallways, so kids that can leave the classroom, work on a certain assignment or a certain activity, and then they go back into the classroom. So, we've established a lot of those. Like we talked about, we built the second Makerspace, and we continue to improve the first Makerspace, including, we got an E-Leaf Grant, and we had a laser cutter, we have a laser cutter now, and we've spent many days with the laser cutter trainer. But we're up and running, and my librarian, Mrs. Schaller, and Mr. Fredette are doing a training tomorrow. Actually, it's the one training off the high school site, going back to Birchland to learn to use the laser cutter. So, a lot of stuff going on that's very cool, and I would argue innovative, as far as working spaces. And then, as far as PD goes, the one that I'll talk the most about is, we now have two teachers leading our Makerspace training, which is a really great next step for us. And these two teachers actually planned Makerspace projects aligned to every different grade-level curriculum. So, like, if you're a 6th grade English teacher, you've got two Makerspace projects aligned to your standards, planned for you by these teachers. Yeah, so, it's all sort of there now, and now it's a matter of giving teachers enough time to digest it, get out of their comfort zone, and use it. So, we're thrilled that those teachers took that on and that they're leading it. And then, as far as technology goes, I touched on it, but I guess just, yes, we're using more and more technology, and we just want more technology. And then, the DLCS standards that Mrs. Anir was talking about, we are really charged up by those. They are so scary. I don't know if you've met them, but when you do, they are so scary. Start by reading the 3 to 5, and you'll have a heart attack. But there's such, because they are, they're such a good change lever, and they're such a good way to drive like the modernization of education. So, myself, my computer teacher, and my literacy coach, we went as a trio to the Masque training, and we really were just trying to figure out, how do we take the computer curriculum that we have and align it to those new DLCS standards? Not to mention our STEAM curriculum, where we're doing a ton of coding now, a ton of coding happening, which is great. And how do we get that even more? How do we get TV studio to touch upon some of these? We have a new class offered called Media and Print Literacy, which is in 7th and 8th grade, and is all focused on the literacy that goes past the reading and into analyzing videos, and analyzing propaganda online, and analyzing fake news. So, we're really charged up by those DLCS standards, and hoping that we can sort of be a leader in the state as far as middle schools go, by next year, being ready to address them at a high level. And then, the pictures, on the left was our October Makerspace Challenge at Birchland, which we always sell out. We had 20 teams sign up. We must have had 7 or 80 kids up there, and just sort of getting used to the fact that it's like the best hour of the month, it seems like. Great buzz, and the kids worked really hard. And then, on the right, those are 8th grade algebra students in the hallway of 8th grade. And you can see that's like a big table where we have for collaborative work, and they're actually teaching each other how to do the problems using dry erase markers on the glass windows. And kudos to my teachers, like that room behind them is like the teacher workroom, and they just kind of go with it, that they're there like, you know, drawing on the windows, doing math. But that's what we're trying to build. We're trying to build an environment that feels modern.
All right, so, continuing on that 21st century learning theme, last year, we really wanted to take a look at our existing courses and see how we can do a better job embedding more of that higher-level STEAM and 21st century-level skills. So, thanks to Mr. Fredette, who's our science guru and ambassador to the state, we got together and kind of talked through some of the things that PD, he's been attending. And also, thanks to partnership with Ryan Quimby and the town's IT department, we were able to buy more equipment for our tech apps lab. And what we're trying to do with tech apps is, we're trying to make that more of an engineering lab, as opposed to the strict technology pieces that they have in place. And so, what we did was, this year, we took our science teacher, Mr. Van Buren, who teaches physics and robotics, and we paired him with Mr. Green, who's a technology app teacher. So, we took an expert in technology and expert in science, boom, put them together, and you can see Mr. Van Buren is smiling, which he rarely does. So, he is so happy to be in this classroom. And that picture right there, you can see that the kids are actually coding, they're making a video game. And so, we're trying to, you know, bring more of that science and engineering piece into some of the technology pieces at the high school. So, really happy with that. The STEAM piece doesn't just stop with the science, though. We did add our digital art classes, which are using more technology in that piece as well. And of course, our community action learning class, which is high level of technology as well. The second picture I wanted to show you is that computer access at the high school is in very, very high demand. And when I talked to Mr. Quimby about it, he said we have the lowest student-to-computer ratio than all the schools. So, we're trying to build more capacity for technology and computing, but we really have some room to grow in terms of access for our students. That is just one of the, the teachers sign up every day, so you can see, it's constantly being filled in. And one of the big, we did a survey this year with teachers, and tried to get a pick-they-brain of how we can do better with the technology piece, and many of them said, "We need more computers." And so, you know, our goal is to be one-to-one, and we hope that in the near future, that becomes a reality. I think Mr. Smith kind of alluded that we're kind of having those talks, and Mr. Quimby's looking at, thinking that's a real possibility, and hope we can make that come true for our students and for our teachers. Just to piggyback on Mr. Ficero's question about computer use, we do use Google Classroom a great deal, but we don't just use that. We did it with our survey, we see teachers that are using Notability, which is a note-taking app that allows students to annotate PDFs, which is something that they use a lot in the collegiate level. Applications like Class Dojo, Quizlet, Kahoot, Country Gameos, which is an online foreign-language app. So, at the high school level, we're encouraging our teachers to utilize more and more of those apps. But having access to computers sometimes is a roadblock to that, because if the kids don't have the computers, it makes it difficult to have those kind of interactions. The next picture you see there is that, continuing on a focus on STEAM learning and 21st century learning at high school, our teachers are doing a lot more in terms of the PLCs. We have a group rate this year that is working more on community action learning and project-based learning, so a lot of teachers are kind of focused on that. We have a lot of teachers working on technology, particularly Google Classroom. So, the PLC structure that we have in the high school is mirroring that craving, that push towards STEAM and 21st century learning. And then, finally, the last little blurb that I have there is, I just wanted to kind of familiarize with some of the 21st century learning professional development that we are engaged in. Just two weeks ago, I sent Mr. Page and Mr. Marhafkut to the Masque. If you don't know anything about that, it's the largest technology, it's like heaven. It's just like, it's held at Gillette Stadium.
Is it in Iowa?
No, it's at Gillette Stadium. And Tim went, too. And it's just, you know, every, every major thing that's going on in technology is being showcased there. And these guys actually saw a really cool, that was, he was alluding to earlier, it's a new device that kids put on these 3D glasses, and they can dissect a heart with these 3D glasses. And the pen that they're dissecting with actually like beats like a heart. So, it's tactile, too. So, they have all these really, it was great, right? You guys loved it.
I told you, I ordered two.
And then, this spring, I'm going to be going to an instructional technology workshop with Mr. Zilch to learn how, that position, how that movement is taking place, and how it's specifically related to science and STEAM-based learning opportunities for our students. Got a lot of Google Classroom that's being, going on. And later on this year, we are going to do something called ELHS Got Talent. We've invited Mr. Smith and Ms. Anir, and some of the other central office staff to come visit our high school. And basically, what we're going to be doing with our staff is, we're going to have a competition with the departments to see who can give the best 21st century five-minute learning lesson. And these guys are going to be the judges for that. So, it should be a lot of fun. We're trying to encourage that momentum, but also have fun with it, too.
I wanted to interject before we move on to the SMART Bowl 3. When we went to the conference this past weekend, there was a gentleman who was a keynote speaker, and his last name was Daggett, friend of his first name. And, you know, when you sit there and you listen to what this man has to say, you're just like, okay, we're all irrelevant. But, no, really, I mean, he really's like, you're going to have nanotechnology in you, and we're not going to need you, because the robots are going to rule the world. But what he did say is that there's certain things that students need to be taught in the classroom. And you kind of sit there scratching your head, going, how do you even begin? I mean, you know how to begin, but getting around it. So, these are some of the words he used. And I don't say a lot, usually, positive, as we know. But this is what I've seen. I've seen that you're teaching the kids perseverance, initiative, contemplation, responsibility, respect, adaptability, optimism, and even courage, like work along with other kids. This is just a few of the words that he said are very important for our students to be learning as they move ahead, because things are going to change so fast and at such a rapid pace. And then, I'm just going to add that, when you go back to your groups tomorrow, E-Leaf, poor little E-Leaf, they have $23,000 to offer up this year. So, please, think about all these things that you've seen, have your teachers think outside of the box, and hopefully, one of these days, in about $150,000, they'll get to that million point, you get all the money they give every year. But, and so, just want to let you know that I see this happening, you know, in little bits and pieces as you guys move along, and that's good to see.
Okay, District Goal 3. This is where we put everything within an environment that is safe and nurturing and respectful, that allows all of us, hopefully, to reach to our highest abilities and levels. And so, what does that mean in terms of action steps? Well, one of the big focuses this year, probably through many years to come, are social and emotional learning strategies that we're integrating into the curriculum in order to promote the development of students' interpersonal skills, responsible decision-making, and resilience and perseverance, parentheses, which actually was our book study last year with the leadership team. One of the nice things, we've been talking a little bit about the conference that we have gone to, there were a lot of workshops on social and emotional learning and support, much of which, in the workshops, as they were giving different examples, we've mentioned in this presentation tonight. And so, it's nice to see that we're not far off, and so, we continue, we'll continue to map what we're doing this year. We took the initiative, as you know, with our budget development last year, to not necessarily ask for the town for additional money, but we transferred money within our budget to help push and motivate what we're doing in social and emotional learning support strategies. We'll continue to revamp our surveys and make sure that not only are we getting quick-hitting surveys, some of which you've seen, but also more in-depth surveys as to where our students and our parents and our staff are throughout the year and at the end of the year, as they exit to the summer, and we get into our most active planning mode. You've heard a lot about how we're engaging students, but we also are looking to engage families and community. And so, we hope in all our buildings, we're going to be able to provide at least two school or district educational workshops, that gets the community in. Those youth safety presentations actually try to branch the entire district together. And then, we want to make sure that we're engaging community groups to help us with this, specifically partnerships. We've talked a little bit about partnerships between town departments, such as the IT department, but it's also reaching out, and although she couldn't be here tonight, Dr. Welsh has reached out to BayPath and is beginning to develop a partnership with BayPath, where we're going to get some of their occupational therapy students working in our schools. And so, it's those kind of partnerships that not only support different type of learning, but also initiate different type of thinking, if you will. And then, as we look at that, I just wanted to bring us back to Convocation, because Ross Weinberg really hit, notice how focused everybody is. I'm pretty sure if you took a picture maybe 10 minutes earlier in Convocation when I was speaking, you might see more people looking off into the distance. But his whole message was around the whole child. And that's what we need to continue to focus on.
So, for the elementary, the social and emotional learning strategies and an anti-bullying curriculum will be integrated to promote the development of students' interpersonal skills, responsible decision-making, resilience and perseverance, grit and growth mindset. We kicked off our school year this year with a message at Open House about Growth Mindset and Grit, two books that we reviewed and read here at the leadership team, to give a message about what that means for students and for parents, to think about that as they're working with their children and having a growth mindset. Then, the teachers did all this wonderful growth mindset work with the students to build growth mindset embedded in the culture of the classroom. So, we always feel like we can work toward improvement and never feel like we're fixed in any one thing. For social and emotional development, we continue with our second-step curriculum that we do, in collaboration with our counseling staff, our school psychologists, and our teachers. We do a cyberbullying program for 5th graders that our counselor leads, that's very successful. And there's a new thing that we're doing this year that's really exciting. So, Sarah Chabell at Mountain View, a few years ago, had training in this project called Look for the Good. And she sent an email out over the summer, saying that it's been very impactful and very successful, and it's something that, if Maple Shade were interested in, look through the information and, you know, of course, make a decision. So, I did, and the information was great, it was very solid. So, it was one of those things where my counselor and school psychologist arrived in August for their first day of Convocation. I said, "Hey, guess what you two are doing? You're doing the Look for the Good project." But it has been so positive. So, there's so many components to it. It's all student-run, so you have student leaders that get nominated by teachers. So, it's all student-run. The students run an entire assembly for the entire school. The adults don't run the assembly. There's a You Matter component, so there's all these little You Matter cards that go around the school to make sure that student to student, teacher to teacher, teacher to student, student to teacher, and principal gets, we get You Matter cards, because we all do matter. There is also a letter component, so you write a letter to the person that matters most in your life, then you have to read that letter out loud, either to yourself or to the actual person, but you have to read it out loud, because that is very impactful on you. There are these gratitude spots, so there's a gratitude spot that's like around the school in the hallways, around the playground. If you step on a gratitude spot, you have to say something you're thankful for. And then, all the students do a gratitude campaign, where they have covered the entire cafeteria wall in sticky notes of things that they're grateful for. So, it's really been so positive, and it has a really great culture around the school right now with the Whole Look for the Good campaign. So, that's something that I was very thankful that Sarah Chabell turned me on to, and it's worked really well. We also have our intervention counseling groups, that is perspective-taking, anxiety, attention, friendship, perseverance, executive functioning, positive self-think and self-talk. Those are all very successful, and our counseling and school psychologists work very hard with those students. And then, this one really got me thinking about the ways we engage parents in our community in different ways. And I was very proud of the ways that we do this, as I was reflecting on it. on it. So at least one per grade level event each year for parents, and many classroom visitor opportunities exist. Some examples are folklore and poetry celebrations, parent and student book clubs facilitated by teachers, robotics showcases, animal studies showcases, states and regions showcases, immigration simulation, which is the highlight of our year. I can't imagine how great that is every year. Invention convention, Wilson Reading Night, Learning Carnival, which is another great highlight. And then this year, we've added our Stars residency grant, has a community event for Makerspace to engage the students' parents and what that is and what the students did there. So that's what we did for Goal Three.
So at Mountain View, Michael already talked about Look for the Good, so I won't, I just, Sarah did integrate it into our school about three or four years ago, and there's a picture. I'll explain when that slide comes up. But we start ours November 22nd is when our kickoff is. And the one thing that Michael didn't mention that we're doing is we ordered T-shirts for the students. The parents could send in money to buy their child a T-shirt, so that we're all kind of in the same shirt for the first day, and it says "You Matter" on the T-shirt. So we had about, I want to say, three-quarters of the students ordered a T-shirt and most of the staff, so that we'll all be dressed the same that day. The Being a Writer program has a social emotional component that's very strong, so Joanne Welch was really supportive in helping us use some of that money to purchase the Being a Writer program. It encourages students to cooperate while they're working and have respectful relationships and write about those things. So that's another thing we're doing this year. Along with, Amy Pelzik is continuing with the Mark Anti-Bullying Curriculum. She teaches the entire school in different formats, and you'll see a picture of that also. In terms of positive behavioral supports, we're going to build off the Look for the Good initiative and really focus on looking for the good all year. And how I want to do this is looking for students doing things, random acts of kindness or helpful things in the building that, you know, no one's asked them to do, and rewarding them in some way during the year. So the committee that's doing Look for the Good is wanting to build on that throughout the year. We haven't planned our parent workshops yet, but we did, we do take our survey data really seriously. And last year, a lot of the comments focused, especially in fifth grade, around communication. And parents felt like they, because the kids have multiple teachers at the fifth grade level, that they didn't really hear from the teachers as much as they wanted to. So the fifth grade team, especially, well, just as our past parent-teacher conference day, made a concerted effort to meet as a team with the parents. So they scheduled the conferences that day specifically with parents that they felt they needed to see at this point in the year, but they did it as a team. But one of the other things they did, which was awesome, is Robin Clifford, who is on the three-person team in fifth grade, sat with all 60 kids, and they filled out a conference form of how they would present themselves to their parents at a parent-teacher conference. And they had to bring it home in an envelope, and they had to sit with their parent, and they had to give their conference to the parents. And the parents had to send the envelope back in with questions that they talked about and things that they mentioned. And the parents, we got overwhelming positive feedback. They loved it. I happened to walk by the hall one day when she was interviewing someone, and the question she just happened to be on at the time was, "So how do you think you, your behavior is in the classroom?" "Well, I think I could pay attention more. And I think I could probably sit, you know, sit still. Sometimes I'm antsy." They were really being honest, so it was really cute. So that's something that we started this year to include in the engagement.
Okay. So our, and we've talked about this throughout the year, Second Step, and I remember Rich saying, "What the second step? What is this all about?" So really, the big focus for us at our grade level is it teaches problem-solving, it teaches empathy, it provides students with skills for calming down techniques, and also how to handle big emotions. And I think that one of the things that really struck me more so this year, especially because we're planning some events at substance abuse, and it's just to kind of see that connection of what we're doing now in Second Step and the connections that, you know, we're seeing at the secondary level. So when you think of prevention in regards to substance abuse, to bullying, and making positive choices, these skills that they're learning at this level in Second Steps actually sets the foundation and the skills to help them later in life with making really positive choices later on. I have a slide later on. I'll talk a little bit more. And then for positive behavioral supports for students, we do implement and create plans that help, we have creative plans that help students meet individual needs. And also, last year was the first year that we started with our character assemblies. It's school-wide. They're, they're not very long. They're about 15 to 20 minutes in length. And our principals advisory committee actually plans the assembly. So our theme for November is perseverance. We have a whole school read aloud where when the students go into the library, Celeste O'Brien, we have a book, and the theme is on perseverance, so she'll read it. The book that she's going to be reading for perseverance is Salt in the Shoes, and it's a story about Michael Jordan in pursuit of his dream. And then usually the, each classroom, there's an activity that they do in the classroom. So for perseverance, we have these flags and banners. And each classroom will either create a slogan, a perseverance slogan, that they're going to share at the assembly, or words that come to mind when they think of perseverance. And then they're going to share out the assembly, and then when they go back to their classrooms, they're going to hang up the banners right outside, so that we have this common language of what does perseverance mean? What does gratitude mean?
And last year, we partnered with our theme of the month with the Easton Meadow Public Library, and they were also featuring in their children's section, whatever the Meadowbrook School theme was, they had a whole showcase on it as well. As far as engaging parents and community-building experiences, similar to Mountain View, it's kind of early, and we haven't planned exactly what the topics are, but we do that collaboratively with both our principals advisory council and our school council. In terms of the educational workshops, however, we always have a plethora of family events. Our first one is coming up this week. We have Family Pizza Night on Thursday night. And if you flip to the next slide, you'll see an example of one of our most popular family nights, which is by far my favorite family night of the year, which is our International Night. This is tied into the second-grade heritage project, and this is something in planning already for this year, and it's an event that usually happens in May or June. There's committees formed already for Bingo Night, for Literacy Night, for International Night. So in addition to the educational workshops, there's also a lot of just fun and engaging family experiences going on.
And then here's a picture of our counselors, Betsy Sheehan and Joe Hudson.
That was cheating.
That is kind of unfair, yeah. And actually, Eleaf provided the kits for our Second Steps program. So they have their cart, they bring their cart along with all of their resources. There's puppy and snail there, and they go into the classroom. And we're, we're so happy because now every single class, they go into every single classroom, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, for a total of 10 weeks. And they're rotating, we're starting with kindergarten, because we want to make sure that they get that common language. They move to first and then to second grade. The teachers stay in the classroom as well, because we want this to be common language that we're all using to, to support the, the students.
One quick question, I know you're doing it off a lot. Are you still doing the library? Have the kids write the stories and a little?
Yes, we do. Meet the Writers. That's, yes, absolutely. That's still going on.
I like that.
Yeah.
So in the top-left picture is an example of Amy Pelzik, one of her lessons. This is fourth grade. They're working collaborative groups on the anti-bullying contest for the year, which our kids have won awards every year, and Amy travels with them to Bridgewater to get their award. So that's one of the groups. The bottom-left is our Mountain View garden. This is a third grade class doing the harvest this fall. But we also have a garden club after school that Sue Thomas, Marcia Akpan, one of my retirees, Judy Carus, and now Therese Moriarty is involved. And last week, they went on a field trip to Therese Moriarty's son's house on State Arden. He has a farm, a garden that feeds the family for the whole year. I, I do not know anything about gardening, but I helped transport some of the kids. They were very excited. They have chickens. It's right in the center of town, and they have this whole working garden, and the kids loved it. They went on a little trip. And then the bulletin board on the right is how we started the Look for the Good project a few years ago. So there's a bulletin board in each hallway that says what makes you grateful, and the kids design a card with pictures and words to tell what they're most grateful for. And that's how the, the woman who runs the Look for the Good project wrote a book. If you go on the website, this is how it started, with postcards she received. So that's a picture of that.
You gonna show any doors?
The doors, the doors will be at the end of the year, Mr. Rich.
Relax.
So our top-left picture, that's our Look for the Good campaign, and those are the T-shirts that were ordered. Those are our Look for the Good leaders that delivered the assembly that day. That was a lot of fun. And then the bottom right-hand picture is the Being a Writer. As Mrs. Santinello mentioned, there's a strong social emotional component. There's a social emotional goal embedded in each lesson for that program. And all of the, you see the students in the center on the cart, on the carpet, that's in fourth grade. And then all around are all the teachers observing the lesson, and those are teachers from both Maple Shade and Mountain View. And I think it's a great commitment to professional growth as well, in addition to social emotional support for students.
Does everybody get a T-shirt?
So we are going to do, this is our first round of this. We have T-shirts just for the leaders, but in our second round, we're going to open up for the whole school. So we're new at this, Rich. We're new.
So I, I think that's important to, to put this goal into a little bit of context, especially at the middle school level, because even though it's towards the end of the night, and it is Goal Number Three, I would argue that unless we focus specifically on this goal, first and foremost, we're never going to achieve results with Goals Number One and Two, because providing a safe and nurturing environment is the reason why we all get into education in the first place. And we talk about the why all the time. And as much as I love it, I mean, nobody gets into education for data analysis. I mean, we get into it for, for relationships and for giving back and for making connections and for inspiring and, and helping the youth, and that is evident within Goal Number Three. And it definitely is a challenge at the middle school level, because this is a time when we have to provide a nurturing environment while at the same time pushing them out of their comfort zone. This combined with the fact that at this point in your lives, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, which can be three of the most tumultuous years of a person's life, happens all in middle school, it's also during a time when apathy can start to emerge and when it can be cool to not care. So it's something that, that we constantly try to combat. And it's not included in our slides or in any of the bullet points, but I think that's pertinent to address right now, that in the last year's, 2016, 2017's Student Exit Survey results, our current seventh and eighth grade students, when they were sixth and seventh graders respectively, when asked if they were proud to be members of Bertrand Park Middle School, 89% of them indicated that they were, they either strongly agreed or agree that they were proud to be members of Bertrand Park Middle School, which shows that if our goal is to create a safe, nurturing environment, then, then we are succeeding at, at, at doing just that. And so even though it's not, that number isn't in the, in the bullets, I think that's, each bullet's reflective of that number, 89%, which we saw when we looked at our clubs this year, our club sign-ups. We promoted them very heavily this year because we believe that if we are able to offer opportunities for our students outside of the academic setting, it's going to yield results in the academic setting, because we are showing students that we are interested in their interests. And thankfully, you know, our school day ends at 2:00, and students still have a lot of energy left in them. So from 2:00 until 2:50, it's a great time for students to explore some interests of their own. And I, and, and just speaking with the teachers anecdotal evidence, they all indicated that there was more interest in clubs this year than ever before. I mean, and it doesn't matter what the student is interested in, we have a club for them, whether it be art club or drama club, or, because you can't have drama unless it's middle school. Drama club, strings, we have jazz band, future cities, math counts, Burtson banner for, for writers. We have intramurals for our more athletically declined students. I mean, and this year, I, I wanted to get, to throw my, my hat in the ring, to make sure that I, I didn't lose my, my, my edge and I didn't get rusty. So I created a modern mythology club for the students to examine more recent, I would say, examples of mythology in pop culture that permeates throughout the generations and across country, across the countries, so to really examine what makes them endure. And we're examining, you know, examples like Superman, Batman, blah, blah, throughout the year. By the end of the year, students will have a, a strong handle on, on what makes these characters endure throughout the generations and throughout different countries and throughout different regionalities, and they themselves will create their own modern mythology. So it's been a very, very exciting time, and we continue to, to see what we can do to increase our club enrollment. Beth, earlier you had mentioned social emotional learning at the conference that you had gone to, and that is definitely focused at Bertrand Park Middle School. On Mondays and Thursdays, we've always had extended advisory. We're fortunate for that. But this year, based on what we have seen and what our students need, and based on the success that we had last year with our hashtag Positivity Day, in which all of our students were able to engage in social emotional learning, we have focused our Thursday advisories on just that. Based on the social emotional learning competencies, we are able to address cyberbullying, mindfulness, growth mindset, empathy, so that that has, we're able to create lessons to give to the teachers for a, you know, a very quick, it's about 20 minutes, but it's impactful, and it's a great way to, to kick off the day on Thursday and, and wrap it up. So we're going to launch our 10th or 11th one this Thursday, and we're getting really good feedback from, from the staff so far.
And we know we're doing a good job because the eighth grade students have started a petition for us to stop doing it.
Good point. Good point.
So I said, oh, perfect. We must be doing well.
And our student council continues to really raise the bar in, in terms of what it means to be a student council. We just had a Fall Ball, a very successful dance a couple weeks ago for the seventh and eighth graders. It was a great time. And we, through the student council, we were able to raise over, you know, $1,700 for the Raise of Hope, and we had a good, strong turnout on the Walk at Forest Park that particular day. And then in terms of just looking at students, you know, we are fortunate that our teams of teachers are able to meet three times a week, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, to just meet as teams to discuss their students. And that, that is time that is allowed for parents to come in and for us to, to have conversations around students and how to best help them when they're starting to become concerned about their students. So a couple of the, the initiatives that we have is our student assistance meeting process for our students that are really, really struggling. We invite the parents in, we invite a specials teacher in, the core teachers in, and we have a series of meetings throughout the course of the year that, that really zero in on students' strengths, challenges. We build action plans around those challenges, and then we monitor those, those action plans every four weeks or so. And then based, and then the end of the process might either just show a lot of success, it might lead to a D cap or a 504 or an IEP. During our student support team meetings, myself, the guidance counselors, the adjustment counselor, we are all able to come into the, the team meetings. And that way, it's just a great deployment of our resources, so that teachers don't have to reiterate themselves, repeat themselves to me, and then to a guidance teacher, a guidance counselor, and then to an adjustment counselor. We're all there on the same page to be able to provide our support to whatever students are needed. And so here, here are just some, some pictures.
Oh, God. Look at that top-left picture.
Top-left, as you can see, this was, this was, you know, when we were raising money and raising support for, for breast cancer awareness, which ultimately led to the Raise of Hope walk. Top-right is the culmination of our summer reading. Every year, we, we have our students, you know, read a book. This is the author, James Prowler, who had written the book, By Stander Among Others, which was taken from elements of his own life. And so when speaking to the students, he was able to discuss how his own life and the experience that he had in his life as a middle school student himself, watching bullying occur, how it helped shape this novel. Bottom-left, that giant colorful gorilla was a, was an example of our, our magazine fundraiser that we had this year, which was, which saw more student involvement than we have seen. that we had this year, which was, which saw more student involvement than we have seen in a long time, partially because of that giant colorful gorilla. Students loved it. There was a raffle to win it.
Oh, good.
I'm not quite sure, logically speaking, what you're gonna do with that, but logic and middle school students don't necessarily go together. They did love it, and that was a lot of fun. But I think that what you see in the bottom right-hand corner is the one that speaks the most to me. Going back to our Thursday advisory activities and promoting social-emotional awareness and just trying to get our students to be their best selves, no one demonstrated that more this year than our P.E. teacher Julie Kraus, who, when given the opportunity to go to Houston after Hurricane Harvey, she did so for a couple weeks with the Red Cross to work twelve- to fourteen-hour days to help the people that were brutally affected by that hurricane. So Ms. Kraus was the embodiment and exemplar of the things that we're looking for in our students, and she was able to keep in contact with myself and Tim. And through Tim's Thursday messages on TV Studio and my weekly emails to students, we were able to reiterate what Julie was doing down there. So she was able to just directly speak to the students that way. So she just was a living hero and embodiment of all the things that we were looking for in our students at Bertrand Park Middle School.
Okay, so to highlight some of the stuff we've been doing at the high school to start the year, we really have made a push this year towards investing in both caring for the self and caring for others. So just to start us off a little bit, the first picture you see up there is a picture of our students from Spirit Week. We did have Spirit Week back at the beginning of October, which really does bring the school together. And on top of that, we also, prior to that, also had our club fair, where, like every other year, we offer over twenty different clubs to the kids, and we always have high participation rates. Go on, go on, okay, to the next one. So continuing on during the same week of Spirit Week, we also were able to bring in some different guest speakers based on information we received from some of our student and parent surveys, where we had one guest speaker from the DA's office talking to us about healthy relationships. And we also had a group of speakers from Western Mass Rehab talk to our students about substance abuse. So we were just fortunate to have both of them come in and address both our freshman and our senior classes. Moving on from there, to talk a little bit about our social-emotional program, programming at the whole school. So we did start our wellness class this year, which was being taught by one of our special educators as well as our school adjustment counselor. We're running two sections of it, the nine and ten, and then the eleven and twelve level. And that really is going well. We'd love to expand that program and really offer more programming in-house for students with those social-emotional needs, and potentially even bring students back into the building to support them through the staff that we currently have, because we really feel like that program's going very well this year. And continuing on that same thread, another program that we've spent a lot of time revamping and overhauling and really, I guess, beefing it up in a sense, is our Advisory Block. Last year, we piloted it. We ran it about once a month. We only ran ten sessions. This year, we're running approximately twenty sessions of our advisory, and it's really being spearheaded by two of our teachers, Ms. Norris and Ms. Dixon, who, instead of just calling it Advisory Block, is now Spartan Block, we're offering it bi-monthly, so, I'm sorry, bi-weekly, so it's every two weeks. And right now, we're in the process of developing a four-year curriculum. So students will have a tiered curriculum from freshman through senior year. And right now, we're in year one of that project, and we're hoping by the time we get to the end of this year and through next summer, we develop that four-year curriculum so the kids have that experience all the way through high school. And just to continue on, we really do have a very civically-minded student body. We talked about, I spoke about the clubs earlier, but we do have a lot of students who, in those clubs, participate in a lot of community service activities, as Connor spoke about. We also had a number of students participate in the Raise a Hope Walk. We actually have two clubs that participated there, and we had a lot of students get involved through our Pink Ribbon Club and our Key Club. And they even helped P-Sweets decorate some of the cupcakes for that event. And then finally, I'm going to turn the last piece over to Ms. Flanagan, who is going to talk a little bit about the cultural diversity committee, which we're starting at the high school as well.
So we found that we really have a need at the high school to kind of help students navigate differences with each other. When you talk about, when you talk about disciplinary issues that we have at the high school, they're usually based in tolerance of other people for being different, whether it's their race, whether it's their sexual orientation, whether it's, you know, them having disabilities. We're trying to cultivate a more tolerant acceptance of students for the different ways that they present themselves. And so one of the things that we are working really hard right now is we put together a committee of students. So we have some students from our multicultural club, the GSA. I'm also working with some teachers on that committee. And what we're trying to do is develop a plan of activities that focus on diversity, and not just for our students, but for our teachers and for our parents. So for example, one of the things that we did with our teachers recently, we invited Zemara Tennyson, who formerly worked with the boss of the police department and helping train police officers on racial tolerance. And so she came in and kind of tailored a program to fit the needs of, you know, how teachers can better assist students with diverse populations. And that day, as you can see from that picture, we actually held a cultural potluck. So teachers brought in dishes from like their culture or their family favorites, and it was just a real nice way to bring people together and kind of celebrate that while we are one Spartan family, we all have unique and different perspectives and cultural experiences. So we are actually gonna meet with our cultural diversity committee in the next week or so. And just kind of charting out the year, our focus is going to be diversity in terms of race, gender, students with disabilities, and kind of tailoring it to all the different branches, with the goal being that we want to create a safe and nurturing supportive environment. And this is so closely tied to social-emotional learning, because when kids feel good about themselves and they feel accepted, they perform better in many different categories. So it's a really important topic that we're trying to cultivate this year, and it's part of our mission statement, honoring diversity. So working really hard at that.
So as you can see, there's a lot planned for this year to support our three goals. These are just some of the measurements we hope to, and results we hope to be able to bring to you at the end of the year. You know, obviously, we talked about our baseline data. That's gonna be used by the state to develop what our achievement targets will be. We also wanna make sure that as we're looking at state assessment data, that we're keeping our student growth percentile in that forty to sixty range. We'll get some of those, we can establish a growth percentile through STAR and take a look at it there as well. We wanna see, on our district benchmark assessments, as we consistently revise and try to align those as well as we can to the state standards, that we're looking at ninety percent of our students scoring in that progressing or mastery category. And then more to the topics we were just talking about, as we look at our survey responses, whether it's a program for parents or a program for families or just programs for our students, we're looking to be above that eighty percent with satisfaction in what we're doing. And probably most importantly, that last bullet, we wanna be in the high eighties, low nineties of staff and families reporting that they're feeling welcomed and safe at all abilities. That would be beyond the litmus test that Dr. Allen uses with these eighth graders. So questions?
Your presentation.
No, it's, it sounds like there's a lot going on.
Mrs. Strachan, can I have some of our files?
That's, yeah, I mean, that's sort of the driest version of all of it, yeah. That gives you all the action steps and all of the goals and then the key benchmarks and measurements for each of the goals.
Now, we get student growth percentages with this Next Gen M cap?
You're gonna get it next year.
Next year, not this year. Right.
I don't know, right?
Yeah.
No, it seems like a lot of great work is going on, and, you know, I'll email the principals that, you know, I wanna come by and tour the schools and see some of this in action. It's, you know, it's nice to hear about, but to see it going on is even more exciting to really see the kids engaged with everything. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll go quickly. Can you just talk? Yeah? Yeah. Okay.
Hey, talk to Allen.
Allen, you still?
Shall I? You can go anytime.
I'll move for a two-minute recess. Can I get two minutes?
All right, we have a motion for a two-minute session. A second, any further discussion?
It's always, it's always.
All right. So we are back from our little two-minute session. Hope everyone feels refreshed and we will move on.
So we are moving into Assistant Superintendent for Business, five point two point one.
I'll move that we accept the thirty-five dollar donation, bench donation to commemorate the class of nineteen eighty-five.
All right, motion's made.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward five zero.
I move that we accept the ELHS bench donation of one hundred and forty-three dollars in memory of Mrs. Ann Lynch, former English teacher at ELHS.
Okay, motion made. I'll second. Any further discussion?
Just one, a citizen kind of warned me that if, we gotta start to be careful, because what happens if a lot of people start to say, I like that teacher, I like that, and they all wanna start donating benches and so on. Just, at some point, we may need a process from the high school administration at some point.
Okay, I was gonna say that would have to come through the high school.
I was gonna say maybe even look at a policy developing.
Not now, not now. Just a comment.
Because right now, it's just the high school administration, administrators that came forward with the...
With this, a group that approached them, offering to donate.
Right, but it is, it is a point well taken that, you know, we can discuss it further.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, anything else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Carries forward five zero. Perfect, okay. We are moving down to Old Business, six point two, the draft of school committee goals.
Okay, in your packets, what I've attempted to do, based on our discussion in the last school committee meeting, was provide an overarching goal in each category, and then the action steps that were discussed in our goal-setting meeting as well as in our last meeting.
The one thing I noticed was that a lot of these action steps are gonna be discussed naturally. For example, especially the budget's gonna take care of one, two, three, and four. The capital plan's gonna take care of, obviously, the action steps one, two, and three.
Correct.
The educational program and curriculum, I guess we have to decide there probably during the budget time, except for the class rank, we wanted to do. So to me, I think this is just a nice template. Maybe we look at it maybe once a month or on the agenda, or just take a quick look at it. We might not even have, I think we're gonna accomplish most of these in a discussion manner.
So it may look, but maybe like from year to year, something in that may change.
I think that...
Some of it just looks like regular conversation, but I think something like the Meadowbrook Accelerator Proof Paper, and once that's done, like, you know, we don't see that, or we say, yeah, we're not gonna do the roost, but yes, we will, or who knows what's happening with the high school.
Right.
But the intent of this was a working document. It was never meant to be set in stone. So to that point, yes, we, you know...
Each year, yeah.
Well, I don't have a problem looking at it, you know, once a month or every other month, just to see where we are within the process.
And then when we do the mid-year review with the leadership team, we throw this...
Bring it back.
Some of these steps, some of the action steps will have to be an intentional action.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So they'll have to be spearheaded somehow.
So part of those action steps, what I figured I would do, if this is voted into place, is we bring this back to the leadership team, because there are items there where they will probably need to do some work starting now, such as educational program and curriculum. If you need research on the idea of how class rank impacts the social-emotional climate, they need to start working on that.
Right.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So...
So, I was just gonna say, is this something that we're comfortable with, that we wanna vote on, or we wanna look at it one more time and bring it back?
Yeah, I think we could vote on it.
I don't see any reason we can't vote on it.
I mean, it's our first time doing this, and I think it's nice to show that here are things that we, as a committee, are looking to have as our, you know, our goals, because we expect everyone else to have goals, so.
Yeah.
So then, how are we gonna assess if we're meeting the action steps as we go? Are we gonna, once a month, as we were saying?
No, I like the idea of like the mid-year and then the end of year.
Yeah. Develop a document that mirrors...
What they do here.
Give you an example, in fiscal management and budget, your goal, overarching goal is to develop and maintain a budget for ELPS that balances addressing student need and fiscal responsibility. So as we start to do that, we look at the action steps, one of the things that we will need to take a look at is just provide a review of athletic user fees in the revolving account and how we're currently funding the operational portion of the budget for the athletic program.
Right.
And see if there's any possibility there of reducing that fee. So that might be a meeting or two of the athletic subcommittee, and then bringing back that information here during the budget process.
Now, on the bottom, with community relations, where it says action steps one, one and two, the second one, increase community engagement at schools through increasing opportunities to display student work. I don't want the admin team to think that it means that they have to contact us with everything they're doing. I think my intent, when I was mentioning, was that too, and I see it happening in some more than others, opportunities for the families to be engaged and come in and see what their kids are doing. So I don't know if that needs to be clarified a little bit, but, you know...
Sure. Yeah, no, I think that's important, and I think you saw some of their plans tonight.
Right.
But I think we need to flesh that out more. But I also think, and that's probably...
I mean, I like knowing what they're doing.
If you're referring to Mr. Fredette's email from last week.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. So I think it's more, just as you said, we need to discuss it more. I think there are a lot of opportunities that aren't advertised as broadly as, say, Mr. Fredette's email to everyone last week.
Right, and he's always been very forthcoming with the things he does.
Right. And I think it's just incumbent upon us that we need to realize, okay, we may have been sending that information out just to that particular class or two classes, and maybe that's something we can invite some others in, you know, maybe it's school committee or other administrators, and expand that audience. It doesn't mean you're, in every event, you're gonna invite the entire school community.
Right, but I'm just saying more opportunities for the kids to do things that people can come in, you know.
Sure.
So should we still vote on this this evening?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the school committee goals, including the action steps.
Sure. Yes.
Great, all right, so we have a motion made. A second. And seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward five zero. Thank you very much for doing this, Mr. Gordon.
Sure.
Sure, thank you.
For helping us with it.
No problem.
All right.
It's a team effort.
This is true. All right, moving down onto New Business, we have seven point one, the Bertrand Park Middle School Eighth Grade Field Trip to High Meadows Resort.
So this is looking at their end-of-the-year trip that the entire eighth grade takes, and it's broken down more on the second page, just indicating, you know, how many students are going, number of adults, and then total participants, and it's an all-day event, roughly eight AM to five PM.
They do this every year.
Every year, yeah. Move to approve the Bertrand Park Middle School Eighth Grade Field Trip to High Meadows Resort, Grandview, Connecticut, on June eight, two thousand eighteen.
A motion made. A second. And seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward five zero. Okay. We have seven point three, the superintendent's SMART goals, two thousand seventeen, eighteen.
Okay, in your packet, similar to the goals for the school committee, this is my personal individual education plan. What I've attempted to do with the five goals outlined here is to make sure that they're aligned with the district goals and the building goals. So you see that that first student, student center or student growth goal is really looking at our first two academic goals at the district level and seeing how we, as a leadership team, can help support and make that happen for our students, that there's growth for all. And then the practice goals also are aligned to hopefully support all the different endeavors you heard outlined tonight. We always do a, a book study, and this year, it's Leaders Eat Last, and it seems to work very well with the two book studies that we had the last two years, which was 10 Lessons in Leadership, which was written by John Doria, and that was focused mostly in the education arena. Yet, "Bred" by Angela Duckworth and Leaders Eat Last by Simon Sinek are not set in the educational arena. However, it's interesting, and Ms. Sineer, jump in if you're seeing this as well, we're getting more connections as we look at other arenas and see how we apply these type of concepts back into the educational arena. Things that we actually discussed in, say, 10 Lessons in Leadership have come back in our discussions around leadership, excuse me, Leader's Eat Last. It's just been, that's only with one book session so far, so it's been pretty productive. And then two, three, and four, it's, it's really looking at how we continue to outreach and build our relationships. Two is very specific to that EL Youth Safety Committee and really expanding its capacity specifically with the audience that it's reaching, because I think we're reaching families and parents for the most part, and we want to make sure that we're starting to reach students and maybe align more with some of our athletic program offerings, such as last week, we actually presented at the Winter Sports Information Night. So certainly if people have questions or want to offer revisions, certainly take all those into account and I can revise this, or this can be something you discuss and vote on tonight in terms of an educator plan for me for this year.
I'll open that up for any discussion, anybody want to.
Pretty, I mean, it's pretty standard. Yeah, we've heard the discussion before in various ways, so it's kind of a crystallize it all.
So if no one has any suggestions for changing, we can vote on this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we can have a motion.
Motion to accept the superintendent's SMART goals for 2017, 2018 school year.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have 7.4, the retirement waiver.
So that was what was discussed in the executive session, and so now just voting in the open session regarding whether you're going to grant the waiver or not.
I move that we grant the retirement waiver discussed previously in the executive session.
Okay, motion's made. I'll second. And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward, five zero. We are coming right towards the end where we say our thank you to Mr. Mackey, and thank you, Ally, for staying this evening. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, need a second?
You're not going to get one second?
A second. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward, five zero. And thank you, and have a good night.